For those who care to, please rise for an opening prayer and salute to our flag. Mr. Mendez, would you open this in word of prayer, sir?
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for today. We thank you for the opportunity to gather. We have such a leading guidance to this meeting. It's in your son's precious name we pray. Amen.
Let your legions stood by on the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, a hundred hour invisible liberty and justice.
A few announcements before we get started. Last day to register as a candidate for city council will be Tuesday, January 20th at 5:00 p.m. in City Hall. Please see Brendan if you have any question about that. Additionally, we have three new employees. Stephanie Weaver in parks is now our front desk supervisor. Edith Bryant is our customer service clerk here in the finance department. And Chief Steve Ives, the police chief and interim police chief. Welcome, Steve.
Thank you.
Look forward to having Mr. Ives on board and Mr. Weber and Ms. Bryant. Anyway, also additionally, birthdays this month, Karen Freeman, the legal department, January 2nd. And Ms. Kathy Harrelson, January 9th. Happy birthday, Kathy. That is a Pittsburgh Steeler card. Hope you enjoy it.
Where's the match?
Since you are Ravens fans.
Condolence card.
Condolence card from Steelers to Ravens. So anyway, thank you. On to public hearing. Like to open a public hearing concerning an ordinance of the city council of the city of Republic of Missouri amending Title IV Land Use Regulations, Chapter 405, zoning regulations, Article 8, Special Use Regulations, Section 405.670, generally institute a renewal procedure for group daycare home special uses. Welcome, Ms. Nagle. Please give us an overview, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. This item for the public hearing is pertaining to a renewal procedure that we are going to recommend be implemented. And the renewal procedure would have to do with the actual special use permit that you must obtain when you have a group daycare home.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to speak for this particular public hearing, please step forward, state your name, sign in, and give us your best three minutes. Anyone wishing to speak against this particular public hearing, please step forward, state your name, sign in, and give us your best three minutes. Seeing none, public hearing closed. Like to move on to citizen participation. Anyone wishing to speak to anything not on the agenda, please step forward, state your name, sign in, and give us your best three minutes. Seeing none, citizen participation closed. Like to have a motion on the consent agenda.
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Before we get there, want to make sure that everybody reads, as per RSMO 109.230, city directors that are on file, the city clerks office have met their attention schedule. We've destroyed compliance with the guidelines established by the secretary of state's office. Want to make sure everybody has seen and read that. If there are questions with that particular item, please contact Brendan. Have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Any abstentions? Most carries eight to zero. Thank you very much. Mr. Krychki on the financial report.
And just let me know, John O'Donnell would have been here tonight if he wasn't down with the flu. So thankfully, he had run his report prior to the meeting, so I didn't have to try to go and recreate that. But you have everything, actually, in this first meeting. Since we skipped the second meeting in December, you have everything here that we normally give out over the course of two meetings. First page is the unrestricted cash balances by fund. You'll see that those are starting to increase, and that's due to the end of the year collections on real estate taxes. And we got our L E S T payment in, so that money is starting to accumulate. And that is the reason why we are seeing a higher balance on our unrestricted cash balances. Second behind that is the revenue and expense report. That is what you see every month. If you do see any items in there, if you have any questions, please feel free to contact myself or John would be happy to answer any questions. We're getting very close to closing out 2014. This is a snapshot for just December. It'll be probably close to March before we actually get through with closing out the entire 2014 calendar year. There's still a lot of revenues coming in that are attributed to 2014, and we still have some expenses that are still yet to be paid out. But this is what's been paid out and taken in both for December of 2014. Behind that, this is a monthly statement that we give for all debt outstanding. You can take a look at that. You'll see a listing of all of the citywide debt, everything from fire trucks to infrastructure improvements. And you can see the timeliness of the payments and beginning and ending balances and when those will retire. And then the last page is, and save this one for last, because we did get our last month for sales tax, and we did crack the $2 million amount for the year. $2,65,904 is where we finished out the year. Sales tax collection added to 1% mark. That is 18.83% higher than where we had budgeted.
That's the first time we've ever hit two.
I believe that is the first time. I think back in '06 and '07, we had gotten into the 1.8, but never even above 1.9. So it was a very good year for the city.
Very nice. Thank you.
So that was good. We'll have more to report on this at the next meeting. But fire sales tax, we got those monies in. Of course, that year is just what we received in general sales tax. Then motor fuel tax came in slightly higher for the year. Well, we still got one month to collect there, but we're still running about 2% higher for motor fuel tax.
Questions, comments, discussion for Mr. Krychki? Anything at all? Seeing none, any motion to approve financial report?
Motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Any abstentions? Most carries reports from staff. Mr. Krychki, anything?
No, sir.
Mr. Derrickson?
No, sir.
Mr. Keeling, future community events.
I was telling Angela I don't have my contacts in tonight, so from back there, you guys are all handsome and beautiful. All the fuzz.
I'm not sure if fuzz, that's right. That's a bad one.
We're not sure that's a compliment.
Tiny bloom. I'm moving right along, anyway.
I don't want to blind you with my reflection. Anyway, go ahead, Brendan.
Season passes early, Bryce. Hard to move on from that. You want me to get that right here?
If you can't read this, it's pretty easy.
I can read perfectly, but I'm telling you, like, right here, I can't even see you.
You want my glass?
No, I'm good.
No, I'm gonna put some.
Republic Aquatic Center.
Thank you, sir.
Early bird season passes are currently on sale through March the 13th. You can pick those up at the Republic Community Center. We're also registering for our winter adult basketball program. The season begins the week of January, the 28th. Game days are on Wednesdays, and all those games are played at the Republic Activities Building. January 13th through March the 5th is our Okinawan karate class at 6:30 p.m. That's at the community center. That's for everyone ages six years old to adults. January 13th through February 26th is our arthritis foundation exercise program. We host that on Tuesdays and Thursdays at 1:30 p.m. at the community center. That's a free event. January 14th through February 11th is senior Wii bowling. We have time slots available at 9:00, 10:00, 11:00, 1, 2, and 3. Pre-registration is required. January 15th through February 12th is toddler tumbling. We offer that at 5:30 or 6:30 p.m., and that's for tops for ages 2 to 5. January 16th through the 23rd is Todd Academy. That's at 9:15 or 10:30 a.m. That's for ages 2 to 5 years old. Those are on Friday mornings. This coming Monday, January 19th, city offices will be closed in observance of Martin Luther King Day. Also on that same day, since Republic schools are out, we offer our Schools Out program. That's from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. for all children ages 6 years through 12 years of age. January 20th is the last day to sign up if you're interested in running for Republic City Council. January 26th is toddler open gym at 10:00 a.m. That's for ages 0 to 5 years old. January 26th through February 13th is registration for our youth spring co-ed soccer program. That's for ages 4 to 12 years old. The season begins the week of March the 10th. And January 29th, a movie to be announced yet, but it's Senior Movie Day. It's at 3:00 p.m. It's a free event, and that's held at the Republic Community Center.
Thank you, Mr. Krychki.
Thanks, sir.
Be careful on your way.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're not driving, are you?
I've got contacts in the building.
Board commissions committee schedule, board adjustments February 5th, capital improvements January 28th, city council January 26th, and February 9th, planning and zoning January 20th. On to old business and table items. You have motion to have the second reading of Bill Number 14-36.
Motion.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Any abstentions? Motion carries.
In ordinance of the city council of the city of Republic of Missouri, authorizing and directing the chief of police of the city of Republic of Missouri to enter into an intergovernmental law enforcement services agreement on behalf of the city of Republic with the city of Battlefield.
You have motion to have the final passage of Bill Number 14-36.
Motion.
Have a motion in a second. Mr. Krychki or Ms. Chief Ives, who's giving the overview?
Well, I will start on it, and I'll let the expert finish up. This was actually brought to council in December, and it's a mutual aid agreement with the city of Battlefield. This really provides an extra level of service, I guess, between the two cities that if there's a need for assistance between the two, one or the other can call and request that service. One important matter that Chief Ives brought up was the fact that this is an agreement that does not require us to respond as only as is available. So if we have situations going on within the city, then unfortunately, we wouldn't be able to respond and vice versa. And the backup to all of that, of course, is Green County. And this is kind of one of those types of agreements that will really give another little added layer of protection, because county, of course, is not always able to reply or to send assistance on an ad needed basis just because of their workload as well. So this just kind of gives us all a little extra security.
Thank you. Questions, comments, discussion for Mr. Krychki or Chief Ives? Mr. Clickenbeere.
What authority do we have when we go to Battlefield if we're there on their call? Do we have the ability to do anything like arrest or?
And I may refer to Chief Ives here and let him explain how that authority works.
We used to have something, I mean with Green County, where we actually, you know, in the governmental agreement back and forth, we had some sort of actual legal power there other than just assistance. But does this with Battlefield have anything, you know, or is this just for extra crowd control and traffic control and things? Or do we actually have the ability to exercise any authority?
With the state mutual aid statute, we would have the exact same police authority they do when called pursuant to this agreement. It does not require commission. It's specifically designed for mutual aid requests. And as stated, the critical issue for us is to make sure we have adequate coverage here in communicating with our personnel and looking at the call data. The practical reality is we'll probably call them more than they will call us.
Sure.
Because they have less going on than we do. And if we have two officers on at night and one is taking a prisoner to jail, and we get a domestic disturbance, we're not going to have any help. So the practical side is we'll probably call Battlefield over here more than we will go to Battlefield.
And either way, it'll give those officers where they won't be handcuffed when they're here. They'll actually have the ability to do whatever they would do, exercising their duties in their own city.
They have the exact same reciprocal authority, us acting on their jurisdiction and then acting on ours. Yes, excellent. Thank you.
Does this only have, this is in situations where the request has been asked of us. What about situations where pursuit goes outside our city limits, into the Battlefield area? Does this cover a situation like that, or is that completely different?
It does not, and it's not necessary. We have statutory authority to pursue outside of our jurisdictional boundary, though I can assure you that's not going to happen very much.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not a big fan of pursuits. Additional questions, comments, discussion for Chief Ives or Mr. Krychki?
Welcome.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Seeing none, roll call vote.
Councilmember Harrelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Mendez?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Councilmember Frischier?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Clickenbeere?
Aye.
Motion carries eight to zero. Thank you very much. On to new business, would like to have a motion to have the first reading of Bill Number 15-01.
Motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Any abstentions? Motion carries.
In ordinance of the city council of the city of Republic of Missouri, amending Title IV Land Use Regulations, Chapter 405, zoning regulations, Article 8, Special Use Regulations, Section 405.670, generally to institute a renewal procedure for group daycare home special uses.
Thank you, Brendan. Welcome, Ms. Nagle. Please give us an overview.
Thank you, Mayor. This amendment's pretty straightforward. It's, as mentioned before, going to initiate a policy for renewal for the special use permit that's required for our group daycare homes. Planning and zoning met, visited, and determined that they would like to make a recommendation of a five-year renewal process for the special use permit, and it was a unanimous vote at P&amp;Z.
Mr. Wilson, you're on P&amp;Z as LA, is that correct? Anything else we'd like to add to this particular overview?
Pretty straightforward. There wasn't any discussion to speak of at all.
Okay, thank you. Questions, comments, discussion for Ms. Nagle. Mr. Clickenbeere?
Was the five years recommended in the planning and zoning? Or Councilman Wilson, did you guys talk about three or four or five or other options?
They were several years discussed, and they decided on five.
Okay, great. Thank you. Additional questions and comments, discussion for Ms. Nagle.
Was there any discussion along with this, kind of going back to our original discussion, about coming up with criteria used to determine approval for group daycare?
That wasn't in ordinance.
I know it's not. I just wondered if there were any discussion. Okay.
Fair enough. Other discussion, questions or comments? Seeing none, this is a first read. If you have questions or comments between now and the next minute, please contact the planning and economic development. Thank you. On the next item on the agenda, would like to have a motion to have the first reading of Bill Number 15-02.
Motion.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Any abstentions? Motion carries.
In ordinance of the city council of the city of Republic of Missouri, amending the city personnel policy, Section 11, fringe benefits management, subsection 11.3, paid holidays, and subsection 11.4, vacation leave, as it relates to emergency personnel.
Thank you, Brenda. Welcome, Ms. Heatherly. Please give us an overview.
Okay, as the personnel policy stands right now, and we start looking at the maximum accruals, and what brings this on is when we have employees leaving, we start looking at policies and how the city policies are. The maximum accruals for emergency personnel are based on vacation accrual formula, and the police can accrue up to 512 hours, the commissioned police personnel, and the fire personnel working 24-hour shifts can accrue up to 640 hours. As the policy stands right now, that includes their vacation time, 24 hours of what we call personal time, that is given to all full-time employees, and 10 and 1/2 paid holidays. Okay, so they don't get holidays, and so that is all put into their vacation accrual, and they accrue that every month. And so that goes into their bank. What we've done is identified a number of issues that we have with this, one being unbudgeted vacation accrual payout. We have just had two of those where they cashed out 500 hours at a higher salary, and it's been unbudgeted for. And then not utilizing vacation time and accruing that time instead of taking the time off, in which we want to encourage employees to take time off, you know, to get recharged. And then the amount of salary that they accrued this vacation at and holiday. Some of that is years, and they accrued that at a lower rate, but yet they can pay out at a retired rate when they leave the city, because it has sat there for a while. So what we have done is, over the last few months, we've worked on some revisions to the current policy, and we are asking to revise the paid holiday policy and the vacation leave policy in which we've attached. What we're asking is that we pull out the 24 hours of personal time, and we put that on the books just like it is for every other full-time employee. They have to use 24 hours of personal time in the year, January 1 to December 31, or you lose it. Period. That's 24 hours. So we want to pull that out of accruals. Now, what we want to do with the vacation is we leave it in accruals. We leave it in there. However, we pull it out if they want to leave. I think in the handbook, you'll see where we put their maximum accruals that they can have with accruing on the new rates. But if they go to leave, the payout option is we back those holidays out of their payout that they can't take that holiday pay with them. And that encourages them, then, to use that holiday that we're giving them rather than banking. Does that make sense? Jason's looking at me like he's lost.
I'm just trying to, I understand the 24 hours, and I understand the 10 and 1/2.
That 10 and 1/2 is the 84 hours that we're leaving in there.
But they have to use it.
Well, no, they can carry it for two years.
For two years.
But if they are going to leave, what you'll see is like if we use years 1 through 4, their maximum accrual can be 328 hours. 160 hours of that is vacation accrual. That's what they would earn just in vacation. The other hours on that, 168, is holiday pay, the holiday hours that they haven't used. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
And how we come about that is, is, you know, other city employees get these holidays and we take them. We want to encourage them to take them, but full-time employees don't get the option to have holiday pay paid out. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
And so we're just trying to cut down on what is paid out when they leave and encourage them to take time off.
Okay. Are other employees encouraged or required to work on holidays, or is that strictly emergency services?
In other departments, there are on occasion that other departments do have to work on their holiday.
And how is that handled? Are they just, is that part of their?
At that time, David, don't they just get regular pay? They just get?
They get their holiday pay, they get paid for what hours they want.
Okay. Okay, so the 24 hours, they have to use it in a year or they lose it.
And the 24 hours, Jason, that is just what everybody else gets. Those are called personal days, personal hours.
Sure.
Look at it as personal time. I get 24 hours. Every full-time employee gets 24 hours. So we're just saying, let's pull those out and say, we want you to have to take those in a 12-month span. For a firefighter, that's one shift. For a police officer, that's two and a half shifts, two and a half days.
And is that how it is for other city employees?
They have to use it from January 1 to December 31, or they lose it.
Correct.
And we just want to pull those out and put in their hours, their 24 hours, in a floating holiday bank, just like what the other city employees are, so that we can manage those here. If you don't use them, you lose them. And then their holiday hours will accrue in their vacation hours. It's going to, they're not going to see any change in that, other than their accruals will be a little lower.
Mm-hmm.
And if they go to leave, they've got a max accrual and then a maximum payout upon separation, which is, we don't want to pay you out for those holidays. We want you to have used those holidays. So it says if you have to work Christmas Day, we want you to take that day off within the, you know, we want you to.
And they can let the holidays accrue, they just can't take them with them?
That's what we're proposing, yes.
Okay. I understand.
And because they don't, it's my understanding that if they want to, if they are, they have, if they want a holiday off, they have to take vacation time. So if they're scheduled to work, you know, Christmas Day or Christmas Eve, where it's a paid holiday for me, if they want that day off, they have to use their vacation time because it's accrued in their vacation time. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
And so we did pass this out to the fire union, the fire personnel, and the police personnel, and explained it to them. That's the proposal, and what we're trying to do is just structure it to be more aligned.
Mr. Clickenbeere and then Mr. Wilson.
So this has come forward mainly because we had several people retire at the end of the year, and I guess we got hit by some of them having a lot accrued, and you had to pay out on it, which I would assume in accounting, are we not carrying those as liabilities on the books that, kind of like a restaurant has to show debit cards that are out in the system that haven't been used yet? I mean, don't we not show that on the book somewhere as a liability?
We are not, we're not showing it as a liability, no. Unless we know of a retirement that will be occurring, then we could actually budget for that. Generally, what happens is if somebody leaves and we have that payout, we assume, and don't put it in the bank on the fact that that position will stay open for a while, and that because of that opening, that will absorb whatever liability we would have for the payout. But we don't actually do like a prepaid insurance where we pay it out ahead of time and credit to the next year, so we do not have a liability base.
No, we should have somewhere a liability of, at any given point, what you owe out to people, and it, you know, January 1 increases to whatever current salaries are. I mean, I would think you'd want to know if the whole city retired wants what, you know, what you'd owe out there, what's your worst situation.
We do monitor it, but it doesn't go into the books.
Okay. So I can see that kind of bringing it to a head. I know, have we looked at other cities? Because I know like all the school districts, my wife's a school teacher.
We have, and I can tell you, we are being very generous, because the other cities require you either, if you work that day, you get time and a half or double pay, or you have to take another shift off within two weeks or the same month. They require you to take that day sooner if you choose the option to be off than what we are.
If you're like a police officer, though, and you have to work on, say, Christmas, I mean, other employees, if they work on Christmas, we pay them time and a half or whatever, they get paid immediately, correct?
No.
If they work on Christmas, they get?
That's what we were just asking.
They get paid in comp time.
Straight, no, we don't do comp time. They just get paid straight time.
They get their, they get their normal, you know, eight hours for the holiday. If they work that day, they're snowplowing that day, they would get however many hours of their normal rate of pay for that, for those hours.
But no holiday pay on time.
But they would get, yes, they would get their holiday pay regardless. So in essence, they could be paid, they work eight hours, they could be paid double time.
Okay, so what I'm saying is they're getting their cash immediately on a check, where an officer has to take that on this accrual and use it some other time. They can't get paid immediately for it.
But we did bring that option to the staff, and they indicated that the time off was more important to them and more useful to them than the holiday pay.
But they lose it, and to a point, to your point, when that's paid at that time, it's not worth it, right?
I mean, if you get paid for it, you get it immediately. If it goes on accrual and they don't use it at some point, they never get paid for working on Christmas.
But I think our hope is to encourage them to start taking the time off. I mean, how do you get around that?
Well, I mean, most places have some level, obviously, that you can accrue up to, and then you're losing it.
Well, we do have that.
Or I can see on the personal days.
We do have an accrual that, and we do have an accrual where if they reach a max, they start losing their vacation time. Everybody, every full-time employee in the city, our city personnel is not different to that. You have an accrual max based on your years here. You reach that max, and you're not using vacation, you're just losing hours. You're just chucking them.
So are we lowering that?
We're keeping the max accruals. We're lowering just by twenty-four hours. So, we are lowering him minutely by twenty-four hours each maximum accrual. What we're, what we're changing is if they leave the city and they're at their max, that we'll only pay out the vacation that they would have accrued, not the vac- not the holiday hours.
So, if we, they leave in good standing, they want to retire, they give us a good two weeks' notice, they're not fired, they're, they're in good standing with us. We're not going to pay them for accrual time for holidays. That's what this is.
We're encouraging them to use it, correct?
How does that, seems like a morale problem there.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, Mr. Wilson, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Mr. Wilson. Fire away.
Well, kind of along his lines. Get my voice to working.
Take your time.
Right now, I think accrue five twelve or six forty. Now, if they accrue that up to a year, why do you not put that in your budget for that coming year, for that amount for the employees? And keep track of it that way. That way, you've got the money when enough of decides to leave.
You, why do we not budget for the max amount in case they choose to leave?
Per year.
Well, five twelve is the most they could leave.
You know how much they, you- Right. You know how much they're using for that one year. You budget it, that, put that in your budget, and you've got that set back for it. And each year, you put it in there, and then when they do leave, you've got it there in hand.
I'm sorry, I'm not following you.
Maybe I can answer the question. It's possible, it's, it is, it's possible to budget if we know a retirement is going to occur. It's impossible to budget if somebody just leaves the city. If we have no idea that there's a person that's been here eight or nine years, wouldn't be, not eligible to retire, but just decides to leave for a different position, but has a large bank of hours, we, it would be impossible.
A sizable amount if you did like all hundred and thirty employees and have a money bunch.
We wouldn't have, we wouldn't pay the street. Because we couldn't, we couldn't have enough money available to budget for all of those potential unfunded liabilities. And that's what this comes down to with an unfunded liability. We pay out vacation for every non-emergency personnel in the city. They take it, they get paid for it. When it comes to emergency personnel, yes, they do have to work, and they are different, so we recognize that. They do have to work, they get paid for that day, but they also get banked, they get their hours banked as well. It's just another day to them, and they get their hours banked. All we're requesting is that they use those holiday hours and not continue to bank those. One, it's unhealthy that they don't take any vacation, and two, it just continues to bank. And if somebody's looking to leave the city, they can just continue to bank their hours and walk away with a large, a large check, and-
That's true, but they've worked for it. Didn't pay for it.
That's, then that's been the norm, and now we're taking-
You know, the twenty-four hours of a personal day, I can understand, but taking away the hours that they've earned on holiday pay, if they leave in good standing, if they're dismissed for other reasons, I can understand having something in there. But if they leave in good standing and in good faith with the city, I can't imagine not paying them for their, their hours.
And I guess what we don't get, and we're not, we're not trying to take it away, we're not really taking away. They are still getting what they've always gotten. We're just asking them to use it. We're just saying, you know, we're giving you this time, take it, be healthy, go have time with your family, and use it. And so, to put it in perspective, I've, I've got the, I look at the numbers every month. And so, with this new proposed ordinance, if I look, if, if somebody wants to leave, there are a handful that would be over the max payout, and it's, it's by minimal hours. You've got very few, you don't, you don't have anybody but two that are at the max accrual. So, you, you, if, if it were a-
Well, let's say you just banked your holiday hours, though, even if you, if you get ten and a half days already, and then you start adding on, hey, I worked every holiday. I worked Memorial Day and July the fourth, I worked Thanksgiving, I worked Christmas. I always pick up these because I don't have a family and I let the other guys have off, whatever the reason may be. They could take plenty of time off and still accrue over an eight or ten-year period of time, that five hundred or six hundred hours. And it's not because they didn't take off a few days and they're not being healthy, it's because they just chose to work these holidays that other people maybe got off. So, I mean, I can see if they did it in three or four years and never took a day off, but I would bet that a lot of these, especially the ones retired, this is accrued over a long period of time, not because they didn't take a day off.
Which brought up our point, was they were accrued at a lower rate than what they're being paid out at. Yes, they worked it, but they, they were earned at a lower rate than what they're being paid out at.
Should that be an approach we look at, is locking those in, or?
Well, how, I mean, how, how are you going to do that?
You know when they accrue them, right?
Holidays, not, no, not unless you pull them out. I mean, you're going to have to put them out on a totally stuff, I mean, that, that's a whole nother honest accounting nightmare. And Brenda and I sent out emails to all the ci- all the cities our size and comparable. And, and, um, they require that they either use them, and within them, I think the longest was thirty days, or they get paid holiday time if they work that shift. So, why this has taken so long to come out, we were trying to come up with the, the most fair approach, in allowing them to take time off and giving them time to use it and be fair.
And here's what'll happen, how much time can you take at once? Is there a, can someone take like three weeks of vacation at once?
We had an officer just take three weeks of vacation.
Here's what'll happen, I'm retiring on December thirty-first. And, and I'll just call up and say, okay, I want my five hundred hours starting January one through whenever it expires, and the next day I'm leaving, but I'm going to take that all as vacation. We're still going to pay them.
But in a personnel policy, you can't do that.
Well, I just asked that, if you could, is there a limit to how many days that you can, you can take off? I mean, or they can say, they can not tell us they're retiring, they can take all those vacation days as they're having surgery or whatever.
If the supervisor approves it, I mean, if the supervisor approves it, I mean-
Ms. Wilson.
Um, just two questions. I'm asking, we're not making this retroactive.
Well, we want this, we were, we're proposing this to be January one, just simply because it's two reeds, the accruals are always in arrears. So, I accrue for January and February. And so, if we can come to an agreement-
Does this doesn't affect time that's already been accrued?
No, no, this is simply going to affect this year if we can-
Um, another just option I was just thinking of. Instead of accruing that, was it considered maybe that, um, the end of the year, you have all this holiday time? That you have one other calendar year to use it or get paid out for it, but you, like, let's give them thirty days. You either choose you're going to use it, or we're going to pay you for that time. Bottom line, it has to be used by this time, or you get paid out for it, but you can't just keep racking it up year after year.
Yeah, then you wouldn't have, you, they'd get their pay, but it wouldn't keep adding up to a big dollar amount all at once for it.
They'd be getting their pay- Or they'd be getting their time.
You could reduce, you could manage the liability.
Correct.
They'd be getting their pay or they'd be getting their time, but they wouldn't be-
How do you encourage them then to take it, so, how, how do you, at the end of the year, you're still facing that payout?
Well, if they're, if they're, I assume some of them are taking the vacation time and accruing holiday time.
Their, their holiday time is into their vacation, so what we're really talking about is their vacation accrual.
Okay. You would have to keep, you'd have to keep it separate.
We can't, we're not keeping it separate now. It's all in an accrual. So, like what they accrue, you know, their monthly accrual is thirteen point six, seven hours. That's their two weeks of vacation that they would earn, their ten and a half holidays, times twelve, divided by twenty, divided by twelve, and that's how they accrue. It's all in their vacation. Now, it was, you know, there were several options, honestly, with this, who we have said, we'll pull the holiday payout, we'll put it in a bank and say, we'll give it to you January one. If you don't use it by December thirty-one, you lose it. Well, there's cons to that, too, because if you give eighty-four hours January one, and I get a police officer that leaves April one, and he's used all eighty-four hours, then he's not earned the holiday pay that he's used, and I'm going to have to recoup it. Because we can, might have four holidays, you know, in the time that he's here, and we might have, you know, the rest and the remaining time that he wasn't here. So, to try to, you know, we, we are still giving them to them.
Yeah.
Monthly, and, yeah.
I under- I understand what you're saying, I'm just saying-
So, to keep it, to keeping it separate, it's not, it's all just rolled into their vacation time.
So, basically, what you're saying is you take your time off for the city's money pay.
Well, they've got two years to use it.
But that's what you're saying, basically.
Well, I don't think it's that the city's going to take it, we're just encouraging them to take off.
Most, most of you have worked in companies before, Mr. Clinton-Bear, I think that's where your background is. What'd you do with your PTO?
And, I mean, they had to use it in that situation, but I also didn't force them to-
I understand.
Because officers have to work holidays and things, if they were called in, they are very generously on the spot in cash.
I understand, however, there are businesses that work holidays as well, whether they use PTO days or whether they're not.
And almost all of those pay, like time and a half or double time.
True. And that's not what we're saying, though. I mean, that's, that's the proposal is, they're paid anyway. They're going to be paid, plus they're banking the hours. Now, if you guys want to come up with a solution to say, as Kathy mentioned, to figure out how to separate it out, I suggest we figure out a way to separate it out. Otherwise, what's in front of you is to, uh-
The user lose, they're going to, you know, everybody will take a vacation the last week of the year or whatever to burn them. I mean, you're going to end up with everybody taking vacation at the same time, other bad things will, and at some point, those employees are not going to just lose these, they're not going to let them go away.
Well, you can bank it, but you have the two years, correct?
You've got two years, I mean-
I mean, you don't have to take it all of the last week of December, you've got two years to take your holidays.
And like Dwayne plans, I know the fire department plans theirs out, mine's in advance.
I was going to ask if we can bring him up, is that an option?
Who?
Chief Compton, since he's here, can I, can we bring him up?
Yeah, you can ask him, maybe anyone on the firefighter union.
Yep.
I mean, what I'm saying is they plan their vacations out, is it three months in a time?
They're called to the stand.
I mean, they have to plan out, you can't just have a minute to talk about it.
Well, that's why I say the radar.
You're welcome.
We plan our vacation, we have a minimum staffing, I'm sure the police department has the exact same thing. There's a minimum number of people we have to have, and then at that particular point, we start paying overtime, or we, in our case, we use a reserve staff. Uh, we try to plan out, there's a vacation calendar actually for a whole year. Trick be known, staff doesn't really know what they're going to do past six months. They know they're going to be off. If you have kids and you're, you know you're going to go somewhere in the summer, they'll, they'll try to book that. And now, they're going to be off during deer season, that's a holiday for here. But we've got a three-month calendar up, and they can pick what's, where they need off. I got one guy on one particular shift, off, two weeks military, comes back, works a shift, and then he's off, and then two, three days vacation. So, we kind of got it laid out, uh, who's off when. Where we get into problems is when we have those people are off, and we have somebody calling sick with the flu, then we're back paying overtime, or we're working two and two at each station, or we're, we're short in general.
So, how does your people feel about this change?
Well, the proposal that's for the fire department line staff is actually what is, uh, the union actually come back as a counteroffer to the original proposal that, again, Angela had. You know, they're happy with it. There's got to be some compromise. You could give them a gold-plated fire truck and they'd drive because they had a hodge. And that's the truth. But, I mean, this is kind of what they gave, this, this was their counteroffer. Can't speak for the police side, Steve Imes can do that as interim chief for them. Don't mean to throw him under the bus.
Yeah, you don't. Just don't back us.
Yeah, I know, I can feel the eyes burning in the back of my mouth.
Don't run for the door, you're next.
Yeah. But I don't know what's going on on their side, but this is, this is what, what you have before you tonight, come from the firefighters' union. Uh, we're not a hundred percent union shop, we're a economist split shop, and even the ones that aren't in the firefighters' union, we're very well with this proposal.
Are the majority of people that are, let's say, racking up these hours, are they people that never take any time off? Or are they people that end up having to come in to work, someone that has the flu or work a holiday, and it's, they're still taking other time off as they can? Because the reasoning sounds like to some degree that we would like them to take their time.
On the fire side, we have, and Angela's got a list printed out here, we've got, we're down there where we need to be. Myself and Deputy Chief Hollinsworth are ones that have racked up hours, because the last four holidays that we've had, we've had major events happen on those holidays, and we've had to come back and work. Veterans Day was a house fire on Dale Street, right after Thanksgiving was a gasoline tanker that turned over. Uh, Christmas Day, we had a house fire on Navajo Court, New Year's Day, we had a house fire on Hadley or Hardley, I can't remember which one, but we, the two of us, Lynn and I, have racked up quite a few hours. I'm actually over seventy-nine hours and he's over seventy-two, and then as it goes on down through here, there's a couple of other staff members. Nobody, but these are all under?
These are under, what these are highlighted is, if they were to leave their payout, they're short just these few hours.
Okay.
See what I'm saying? So, like Shad, he's the one, he's got this, but he's not over his max.
So, he's currently not over his max. There's only two of us that are over our max, and that's Lynn and I in the department, and that's because of our holiday.
And it's not because you aren't taking other time off for vacations, it's just because you got the luck of the draw when a holiday came around and someone decided to try to burn their house down.
Yeah, and when the gas tanker fell over, I kind of thought I ought to go to that, too, so.
That was kind of a big one.
And to make the point, there's nobody even on the police side that is over the max or right, knocking at that max window. Because since I've been here, I've said, you all need to take your time off, because they have accrued currently, like, let's, police, for instance, because they're the ones I focus on, accrue nine, some of them accrue nineteen hours a month. Well, if they're at their max and they're getting ready to put on, I'm getting ready to put nineteen hours on the books, they're going to have to take off two shifts, two days, just to be able to get that new nineteen hours.
When you say they're at their max, are you saying that they're already at their five hundred or six hundred hours?
They're at their, like, four hundred hour max month.
Okay, and so that when they gain this next nineteen, they are going into a realm where they're going to lose it.
They would have lost it. So, they'll, you might see them take two or three days just to make room for what's coming in.
So, if all of these people are already close to their max and they're going to be losing them anyway, what's, what's the difference in the change?
But that's what I'm saying, they're not, they're, that's what I'm saying, Jeff, they're not close to their max now. There's very few, under a handful, that are that close to the max now.
But it's the ones that have been around a long time.
Dwayne and Lynn.
Right, so it's a lot of years that got them to that.
Are those the only two?
That are over the max, correct.
On the fire side, right?
There's nobody on the police side that's over the max accrual.
Maximum payout.
No, maximum accrual.
Maximum. And maximum accrual, correct.
Mr. Chief Imes.
Well, I mean, she already said this isn't retroactive, so we're not taking away, just go from here on.
We're not taking away anything, we're just trying to change our-
I know, but what I'm showing all is, there's only two people have gotten to this problem, so I don't see that it is a problem. And we're going to end up causing a morale problem by not giving people the hours they've earned, we're going to take them away once they use them.
But they are going to, they're getting the hours.
They get their, get their hours.
If they use them.
Yeah, make, take your hours.
But if they decide to leave, they lose the holiday time, right?
Go ahead, sir.
Uh, the inherent dilemma, I can only speak for policing, is that it's not just as simple as taking days off when you want to take days off.
Sure.
There is not, or there was not until last week, a mandatory vacation schedule in the police department, I created that last week, in which they will bank time to take off, or I will bank time for them to take off, at a time that I can do without pay. So, in the absence of that planning, you do have conflicts where when people take off, we have to backfill by overtime.
Sure.
Just out of necessity, you have to have people to work, because if someone calls for help, you have to have people to come. I think the officers can speak to their personal perspective better than I can, but the idea that it's as simple as just scheduling days off and taking them, it doesn't work that way without a lot of planning. And in response to the concern, I think it is a concern that the city has unfunded liability, and I think it's appropriate to look at ways to address that. That first step being that I'm mandating a minimum of forty-hour block be scheduled by January thirty-first by everyone, or I'll schedule that for them, at a time of my choosing, where I can ensure that we have adequate staffing. But there will be cases where that will not work out. And so, ultimately, you will have scenarios, in a department as small as we are, where if we do allow people to take off to keep from losing time, I am certain I'll have to backfill some of that by overtime, because you can only plan so much in advance-
Sure.
-with the number of people that need to take time off. So, if it was just, you snap your fingers, you take forty, no big deal, then I don't think there would be much concern.
With our staffing, I assume that just about any time someone is taking off, you almost have to have someone else that's picking up time and a half to take their place.
That happens every time we're not in overlap. The, the current ten-hour schedule allows overlap for heavy call loading times, but like right now, at one AM, you're down to two officers.
It's just kind of Rob Peter to Pay Paul type of deal.
Well, to, to some degree, but I think there is room to adequately plan in advance and cause certain blocks of time to be taken to minimize the potential for the accrual that has been occurring. I think that can be addressed by, by planning and causing people right now to put down time on the calendar. But the officers that are banking time, that have time banked, I think the majority of them do take time, will take time when they can. But to some degree, managers like me give them grief for short notice, because we have vacancies in which I'm unwilling to pay overtime to someone to come in and cover them. So, uh, it's not just as simple as send them home, is what I'm saying.
Well, you mentioned that you, you think there could be a plan there to help the city meet these unfunded liabilities. That kind of insinuates that maybe you'd like to have more input, or that your staff would like more input in this? I mean, do they like the way that it is right now, or do you think there could be some more tweaking to it?
Well, there's no question, police officers don't like it when you ever mess with what they have considered as a benefit that they have been accruing.
Correct.
And I can go back to when I worked at Springfield, we felt the same way, in that if we're within the system, and it's not our system, it's your system, if we're cooperating with that, and then a change occurs that harms us, we're unhappy about that, plain and simple.
Sure.
Uh, but we also, in my opinion, have an obligation for family reasons to take time off. Uh, I think I made it clear in the earlier directive this week, that we are, as an organization, discouraging banking time for monetary benefit, there's reasons to take off and recharge and spend time with your family, and that's why I'm mandating time be taken off. But there's just difficulty in making people take time and guarantee- But there's just difficulty in making people take time and guarantee that I can get that for them, because the issue of available staffing is just challenging, and we have to pay overtime. And I'm a person that likes the book to be in the black, and I don't have to pay overtime when I don't have to pay overtime, and if we just send people home, I'm gonna have to do some of that.
Mr. Wilson?
You gotta understand, the city depends on the police department and the fire department, and we don't want to send you a short change.
Well, I, I greatly appreciate that, because I'm, I'm a short timer here, my focus is to help this organization be the best it can be, and help you find a chief that can serve the community and the officer as well. I'll just offer up this, uh, having lived here eighteen years, I didn't have a lot of interaction with the police department. I have been, uh, very impressed with the quality of officers, I was, to be candid, a little surprised by the size of organization it is, what a extremely high-quality group of folks that are here. And turnover has been a big issue, as it is with many small departments, and I don't think there's, there's blame around this table. People leave small police departments to go to big police departments, that's what they do. Well, it, money's a part of it, but money's not, in my opinion, the critical factor. I think you'll find people, and I think we have a couple right now that were on the bubble of leaving, that I've talked with, that I think they're gonna stay. And, how do we create that? We create an environment where they feel like that the city appreciates them, likewise, they have to have good reasons to stay for family, for community, and it's all rolled up into one. It's not just the money, and, uh, I think your even questions tonight about what is in their best interest, I can assure you, just asking as though you have concerns about what's fair and equitable, will go a long way. And in the end, I think their confidence will do what's right for the organization, but also for the city.
I have one more question. You, as the police chief, do you interact with your officers in that you talk to, make a point to talk to each and every one of them through the week?
I've been bringing them in, I worked Saturday night, I worked last night, uh, I'm working seven days a week, and I'm out there working calls with them. And the officers especially that I had heard had applied for other agencies, I brought them in immediately and talked with them. And I, I may be, uh, finding that I'm gonna get a surprise, but I think there's a good possibility, one in particular that was definitely gonna leave, I think is going to give it a go. And, that, that's my hope, is to lay a foundation with them to understand why it's a good idea to stay here, that it's not just about a little more money in Springfield, or a take-home car with the county, but there's community reasons why raising a family and living here makes more sense than, than working somewhere else.
Well, yes, I, uh... Nice train of thought, sorry.
Is it the wrong time then to poke the bear, since we're kind of in a transition period, have we not taken enough time with those officers, that this would be not a good time to approach this?
Well, I can only say that right now, it's, it's, uh, I'd say more thumbs up right now than thumbs down. As a change occurs, I mean, whether it's me or somebody else, there's a bit of a honeymoon period where officers are optimistic, that their best interest will be examined closely from inside the organization. And, I'm not suggesting there's not room for some logic here, I absolutely believe that having significant banks of time that are unfunded is a bad idea fiscally. And, I think that needs to be addressed. I think most officers just believe that if they're in a system that they did not create, that there should be a mechanism to fix it, that they view minimal potential for harm. And, I'm gonna try to do all I can internally to reduce this to no payout. I'd like them all to take their time, because their families need that time, but the practical reality is, it'll be difficult, I, I can't promise you I can do that. Because there's simply manpower issues that I'll either let you take off and pay you, or, or simply deny your ability to take off. But, I can assure you, there'll be management processes set in place to minimize the ability for accrual, because time off is in their best interest, and ultimately, in the best interest of the city fiscally.
Mr. Wilson?
Uh, go ahead, you had, he's been waiting patiently.
Mr. Mendez?
Two things, I mean, I think that's really why we're having this discussion, is morale's a big deal, we wanna make sure that these guys have been used to this, they've done a good job, we don't wanna, we don't wanna hurt morale. Second thing is, this unfunded liability is a huge issue, we need to address.
Agreed.
But I also heard you say that if they have to take time, or lose it, but that's gonna create gaps in coverage, that's a, that's an issue, right? Covering shifts, paying overtime?
Well, I'll just simply say that if I reach a point where officers say, hey, if I don't get some time off next week, I'm gonna lose time, I'm gonna make an error on the side of city protection and service over that individual officer, so.
Sure.
That's the way it is, so I'll either pay overtime, or they won't get to take that day off.
Or they won't get to take that day off.
Correct.
But does that also create the same issue on the fire side as well?
Yes, we would have to pay the overtime.
Okay, all right. Just wondering if, you know, other thoughts need to go into the solution, just wanna make sure that we don't push this so much that we create an issue here, that's just the concern.
Well, that's certainly for this body here, and I'm confident you'll do a very good job at that. I'll just tell you that the officers, and I can go back to nineteen seventy-eight when I began, I've not worked with folks to complain about working on holidays. I mean, it's all about city service, it really is, and the city, the officers are relying on you to do what makes good sense for both the community and for them. And any gesture that indicates that that's a balance that you're looking at, I think will be very well received.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir?
He answered it.
Yes, Mr. Christie?
And, there are a hundred and one options that you, we can come up with. The one that's presented is strictly looking at it, and we've gotta create a healthy balance between staff, emergency personnel, and the city, and try to find some way of compromising, because the maximum payout, I don't think anyone around this table, or not many, can think of when you work, and you are working in your particular business, you don't, you don't get that opportunity to bank more than a week or two. And that's just the way it is, you have to use your vacation, or you use, lose it. Now, we do have a unique situation, as Chief Imes and Chief Compton said, that we have the backfill positions, we have to work holidays, we have to have people out there protecting the, the city and the citizens, so we have to come up with something. So we, we try to create where they're allowed to keep their maximum accruals, keep their vacation, which includes their holiday hours in there, so they're not being used, but come up with a reasonable maximum payout, that still is fair and equitable. It, it requires the employees to use their vacation, that's what they should be doing, but still pays them for their vacation hours if they, if they accrue a lot. And it is, if you're here for nine years or more, it's eight hours, eight weeks rather, of vacation time that you can, you can bank. So it's not, it's not a small amount of money. The one, the one potential compromise, just listening to what everybody said, is that, Angela brought up the fact that we pay out at a higher rate for hours that are accrued maybe two or three years ago. Maybe the difference between the maximum accrual and the maximum payout, maybe there's a, if there's a difference there, maybe there's a, an hourly rate that we can just assign to that, that gets paid out for that. So they're not getting paid out at their full hourly rate, but they still get paid out for some of those hours if they have them on the books when they leave. And that would be just one other option among many that we could come up with between now and the next meeting.
I have one more question for clarification. You said when they leave, their holiday hours are taken back.
Not currently, right?
Not currently, with this, with this.
And actually, I think, I think it's, they're all on ten, so we can't really say it's holiday hours, it's just, there's, it's just however many hours over their, their max, the max payout is. The max payout is the maximum vacation they can accrue for their years here. What we're saying is, we only want to pay out the maximum you have earned on vacation.
Okay, that answers my question.
And any excess hours over that. So if you accrued eight weeks of vacation, if you've been here, you know, like Chad Kleinley, and you've got eight weeks of vacation, we only wanna pay out, if you're leaving and you've accrued that, that vacation, not anything more than that. Does that make sense? Did that put it in perspective?
And that's excellent.
We only wanna pay out the max vacation that you could've accrued. Because we have no way to separate, and these, and these accruals, we have no way to separate out what, how many hours are, are holiday per month, and how many are.
That was the reason for my question.
Are vacation, they're all on ten together, all vacation, and they're just all considered vacation accrual.
That's not a difficult thing for an accounting system to make the difference, couldn't we not separate them?
Not with summit, we can't. And, and trust me, we've, this is months, kinda, and this is months in the work of coming to you.
I'm sure, and, and we're not trying to be hard on you, we wanted to make sure that both sides are looked at, and all, we have some options.
No, I mean, we have, you know, a, a city that, I'll just say, NIXA offers their officers four options, and when I got that back, I'm like, holy smoke, no way, I'm not doing it, because it's a bookkeeping nightmare. Um, it's, it's, it's hard. And most cities, well, basically, all the cities, I believe, asked that they take the time, or they got paid for the time. And when we went to our staff and said, you know, we'll pay you for the time, they're like, no, we would prefer the time off. So that's how we kinda come, I mean, this is circumvented in many discussions, and many talks, and being fair, and, and not really, we're not really taking anything away, we're just saying, if you leave the city, and you're in good standing, if you've got vacation time on the books, great, we'll pay you for the vacation time you've got on the books, that you would've earned during your years of service.
The knowledge of the proposal that we're reading is, the feedback from the firemen's union is, it's pretty good information, is my vote.
Because we did, we sat down with Jim and I and Dwayne and.
Sean and Charlie.
And Sean and their, Joe Bailey, they're union sheriffs.
What was the initial proposal that they countered with this?
This was their counter, what we took to them is that we pull eighty-four hours out and we put it in a holiday bank. Here you go. And you're gonna use them, or you're gonna lose them in a calendar year.
Or we pay them.
Or we pay them.
For the holiday, everybody would just get paid automatically, every holiday would come up.
Holiday pay. We gave two options.
Who would get paid automatically.
It's odd that they would want to, to u- use them or lose them, rather than if they can't use them, especially like, the, um, chief indicated, you know, if it gets to the end, and all of a sudden, everybody's like, oh my goodness, I'm gonna lose mine, now we all went off this week, or we have overtime, and he can't do it, they lose it. I can't imagine that people would wanna be paid instead.
But quite honestly, they are very good about knowing where their vacation hours are, because they're taking twenty hour, let's, I'm gonna use police officers, 'cause it's a close number, twenty hours a month, because they're not gonna lose twenty hours a month. So they'll take twenty, if they were at that max, which they're not, there's nobody at the max right now.
Sure.
If somebody's saying, I gotta take twenty hours this month, just so I don't lose it, they're robbing the right hand and the left hand, just to stay at an even balance. And what we're saying is, here's your max, it's gonna stay the same, but if you leave, we just wanna pay you for your vacation, so encourage you to take some time off. And, and they got.
Was the same, was the same, you mentioned who you interviewed, who you talked to for the fire.
It feels like about a third or four, though.
Right, but was the same diligence done on the police side?
Mm-hmm, we discussed it with Steve Imes, mm-hmm.
Just Steve, were any officers involved in that discussion?
I discussed it with Sergeant Burks, yes.
And his thoughts were?
I'm sorry?
And his thoughts were?
Sergeant Burks wanted the time off. He was one that, that recommended that the time off, and when I, I actually, when I called Sergeant, and I called Sergeant Burks to my office, and said, this is what I think we could just pay. And my, I would, I'll be honest, I was for just paying the officers that worked the holiday time. And he indicated that time, that the time off that he could have with his family at another time, was more valuable to him. And, this is a small town, word travels fast, people talk, they, they, their, what came back to us is they want the time off. And, we're not, I mean, the only thing we're changing again is what they can maximum pay out, you know?
One, go ahead, no, you know that, I just wanna clarify one thing. I know you wanted to get in, I, I have to, I have to clarify this one thing, yes, I think there's a misunderstanding here, when we say that this, this starts January first. It, it does retro in a way, because any, if this were to pass as is, an officer that had hours accrued on the books that were higher than the maximum payout, if they were to leave two weeks from now, they would get the maximum payout. They would lose those hours, so I don't want anybody to think that, that there's, those are still on the book, those would, those would not be in the book. It's, it really does accrue, it does retro back in that an officer or firefighter that would have maximum accrual hours, they wouldn't meet the maximum that they could bank, however, they would be higher than the maximum payout, if they were to leave, then they would only get the maximum payout.
And to clarify, it's Julia two, Charlie.
For what?
No, there are thirteen that are higher than the maximum payout.
Than the max payout.
So if any of those thirteen were to leave, they're not at the maximum accrual rates, but they are above the maximum payout. So if this passes January, whatever, twenty-sixth, and somebody on that thirteen puts in their, you know, their.
Two-week notice.
Two-week notice, and they're gonna leave, they would only be paid that maximum payout. So, in those situations, and I'm not sure if there is any of those that would be leaving, I, I don't think so, but if they are, those would be the ones that would lose those hours, wherever they would be over. Some are over just a few, some are over more than a hundred hours.
And those are hours from last year?
And those have been hours that have been banked for years, in some cases for years.
Why would we, why would we resurrect that back on the, before this policy?
That's why I just wanted to, and that's how it is currently written, and what you were saying, I just didn't want anybody to misunderstand that they would.
Oh, can we add, like a, like a year or two overlap window? Because obviously, we don't want them to take all that vacation in the next three weeks or something either, or hurry and leave us to make sure they don't lose it. But could we give them a window of time to get back into compliance, I guess you could say, or bring it back into the.
Over that max payout?
Yeah, where they'd have, and then over the next year or two to, to take some extra time to get back down below that, so they don't just lose it. I mean, I'm just looking for some other options here, and we can easily maybe just talk about that over the next two weeks, because of the first read, but I'm, I'm just looking for some other things.
And that was, and we did look at that, about giving those above, giving them time to take it off, they, they would do that anyways, just to get to that number, it would be for those that potentially would leave in the next two weeks. The chief had mentioned, Chief Imes had mentioned, there were a couple that honestly are considering going to a larger agency, and, and in that particular case, they may lose hours. I don't know who those two individuals would be, but if they, if they are on that, they are one of the aide within the police department, then they could potentially be leaving some banked hours on the books and not being paid for those.
Well, it's not just the next two weeks, if they left, ten months from now, they'd still be leaving that money on the table if, if they continued at the same pace. But we could at least give them, if they stayed, give them time to get, you know, take some extra time off and get that back, so they're just not losing that things that they've developed over the last, you know, ten years or whatever. Just trying to be fair to the long-term employees.
Yeah, I don't necessarily think it's fair for, for a new policy to affect something that they didn't realize, you know, that wasn't a policy that they did.
Didn't have a chance to plan for.
Yeah, I mean, if they, if, if the policy was as it is now, and they could accrue that time, to now just can say, okay, well, we changed our policy, so all this time you accrued when, when our old policy was in effect, you've lost that, or you're gonna lose that, I, I don't know that that's, I know it's a financial issue, but.
Some people think of that as extra retirement, or a way out on the end.
You hate it, but they do.
My wife does, we, we average, she has ten, ten days a year for school, we average taking about four of them, and so she banks about six a year, and she can get up to sixty, over sixty, we get paid. But she can retire with those sixty, and she gets paid all sixty days, and a lot of people who do count on that, I mean, they, they accrue, and it took her ten years to get to sixty, you know, having to do that, but she's, we think that that, I mean, that's a hefty amount of extra cash when you walk out the, the door. So some people do think of that as like a retire, extra retirement, or whatever, and, you know, if they've been here that long and we can't pay them what other agencies are, that is kind of a little bonus to it, and now we take off the table.
So just, so I'm clear, your, your proposal is kinda take those who are over on, who would be over on the max payout if they were to say leave in two weeks, to let them bank that over here for an X amount of time to use it.
Give them a year or two, we don't want them to, obviously, all take fifty hours vacation.
Well, if you just got forty hours over, you're gonna, you wanna give them two years to use forty hours, I mean, where's your threshold?
Well, I, yeah, I don't know how far over, or whatever.
That's why, I know, because what I'm saying, some of these that are over are over by four hours, some are over by ten hours, some are by forty, some are by a hundred.
And if you're talking about few hours, maybe a six-month window, or something of that nature, give them some time, four hours, I mean.
Well, and I, I don't have a problem with it, I'm asking you for directions, and what's your thoughts for us to write?
Well, that's, that's my, that is my.
We have to give it for the maximum person, if they've only got four, and they have a year to take it, okay, but you can't have the person with forty, take it in six months, or whatever, or a short period of time.
We had the exact same thing happen where I worked. We, we, they went through a bank system where you could bank twice what you earned, and then they stopped. You have to use it all, use it or lose it. And they did that a million years. I personally had ten weeks of vacation I had to take from July to December, you know what I did? I took ten weeks off between July and December.
Yeah, that's not cool.
It was very cool. I'm talking, but it was very cool.
He attended every meeting I was at.
Wasn't cool for him.
But that's what'll happen, that's why you gotta have more time than that, and you can't do it different for every amount of hours. And you can't do it different for every amount of hours. You gotta pick it for the longest person, and then the person's got a few, they got a whole window to use, but the person who's got a lot, you can't stick them into having to do it in a short amount of time, or that's gonna kill overtime.
I think it's a short amount of time, that we're talking about.
I don't think, I don't think forty hours is-
Right, and, and, and we have to look at, like, the, the fire, it's, it's easier for them to chuck it away. It's a, a day for them is twenty-four hour off of their bank, you know? I, and the, the one we have, the highest, the most over, is in the fire department, and it's four shifts, four days. I mean, when we started this road, I mean, you know, Dwayne and I were talking like daily, so if it's four shifts, you've got-
Hundred and forty, though, is the top in the police department.
Hundred and forty hours?
Roughly a hundred thirty-nine point eight.
So, that's fourteen shifts that you have to cover.
Fourteen days.
Or fourteen, you know?
Two full weeks, month, seven days.
But even in six months, I, I think that's feasible.
Fourteen days off? I mean, that'd be a question for them, the chiefs, to see if they could cover fourteen days in six months.
Well, the answer is, we certainly can with adequate planning and plenty of staff. And at this point in time, we're actually challenging. But the answer is, we can, we can do anything with adequate timing and staff, and at this moment, we don't have either. We're trying to hire people right now, but taking ten weeks off, I don't think that's gonna work for any police officer. Some businesses can allow that, we can market it.
I would think a year would be a minimum, I'm-
I think, I mean, we could give them until December thirty-first of this year, and if it's, you know, but at, at the same time, they're gonna have to do due diligence and continue to take time off. We can't get hung up on, this is what they're over and they gotta use that.
Right, because they're gonna have to do their current, too.
Because they're gonna have to use this other as they're accruing. So, in kind of a way, they have to kinda take ownership of the time management that they're gonna be off, you know? And, and, and in retrospect, they're no different than the other average full-time employee that's been here, you know? David's having to take time so he can shift and accrue time. So, everybody has to be good stewards of their vacation time and when they take off. I'm not trying to minimize the situation, but we've got other longstanding full-time employees out there that face this situation too because they accrue at a higher rate, and they have to take more time off because they accrue at a higher rate. So, it, it's, it's a balancing act.
We just don't wanna change the game mid, mid, mid-play, and so you don't wanna give them a year or two window of time, whatever it is, I mean, I'd say at least a year.
I, I think December, in my, my opinion, that one year is probably adequate-
December thirty-first.
If you're dealing with max a hundred and forty hours.
Mhm.
And then not retroactively changing that for the thirteen, trying to put things in a little better, um, perspective in my mind.
Counsel, you're the first read. You feel, sorry.
Quit it, sir, you're the first read.
Uh, well, and that's what I was getting to, Mr. Criskie, but you can amend this at any time you want. You can talk about it any time you want, you can dig into it any time you want. You can amend it tonight if you wanna dig into it, or you can give staff direction to come back with something else, or you can, uh, do nothing until the next read, or you can amend it in the second read if you wanna amend it, or if you don't wanna amend it at all. But you're the first read tonight, so if you want more time to think about it, more time to contact, uh, please.
Angela. You're pointing at me going, uh, uh.
I would like at least the request that you run it up the flagpole to the, to both sides and see what the, like a year would be, and maybe bring that back as an option.
Now, when you say run it up the flagpole, I wanna be specific on who you're wanting me to run it up the flagpole to.
The two department heads for the departments of the, and they can obviously talk to their own staff.
Okay.
And I mean, I don't wanna be out of order here if that's Mr. Criskie's area, but that, I would like to request from you that those options come, it'd be nice to have some feedback on that.
Okay. Any other direction you'd like to give staff, counsel?
What is the direction that has been given? I'm clarifying right there. They're going to-
Allow one year or some period of time, I'm suggesting here, but some period of time for those people that are near or over that bank already, that they have to basically catch back up, that they don't just lose that immediately, or-
Correct.
It's just, you know, it's gone. They have a chance to, to take those off and catch back up to where they've accrued this all this time, they've been playing the game a certain way, and then all of a sudden we change the rules on them and they're gonna lose it. We're giving them a window of time to go ahead and take that time off.
Okay. Anything else?
What's the direction? I'm not sure I'm clear on the holiday.
What was the max payout issue on the thirteen?
Hold on a second.
Well, I mean, uh-
It's actually fifteen. It was actually a hundred and six, a hundred and fifty-eight hours for a person in the fire department.
Mhm.
But there was a hundred and thirty-nine, say a hundred and forty for the police department. Hundred thirty-nine point oh eight, is that right?
Mhm.
Okay, that's right. Okay. Now, back to your question on holiday, is there a direction on that? What's on, what is the proposal in front of you is still holiday. So, any direction on that that you wanna ask for, give counsel, or give staff on that particular proportion? And no offense, no offense, counsel, you've done a great job, you've just gotten off course with what's in front of you by giving direction to her to do something else. So, if that's the case, and that's what she is, and is going to do, and go back, then the only thing I'd have to say is, when you come back, if the information suits you, you're gonna have to set an amendment aside, and be ready for that. Okay? Make sure that you give a campus, what's in front of you is just holiday pay, that's it.
Correct.
Right. So, when we come back, holiday pay is still gonna be in front of you. It's, it's not going away.
We don't wanna amend it now without seeing our options and probably having the next two weeks to talk to people.
Yes, Mr.- Ms. Criskie, I fully understand that, and that's why I'm making sure that you guys are aware of what is in front of you. What's in front of you is holiday pay. If you have to address something else and wanna amend it, feel free to amend it. You can amend it then, amend it now. I'm just giving you those options and wanna know what, make sure you guys are on the right page, because what's coming back is this. It's not gonna be changed, it's not gonna be, nothing's changing. When she brings it forward, you're gonna have to ask for that information, and she'll give it to you, and then you have to make a decision on what you wanna do with that portion of it. Does that make, is everybody clear?
And then make an amendment.
Okay, I wanna make sure everybody's clear on what's going on.
Can we make an amendment to what is in front of us now?
Yes. Can we make it now, or you can make it then? It'll be totally up to you.
I think we should wait.
Well, you gotta see what the options are before you amend it.
That's what I'm saying, but I'm just giving, I'm giving you that.
Same thing will be on the table next time.
Exactly, I'm trying to get, make sure that you guys are all on the same page, doing the same thing.
Yeah.
Then we can always table it or whatever has to happen at the time.
Exactly.
So, scrap it or whatever.
But what's, what's in front of you is this particular bill number is not changing. One-five-oh-two is not changing. Until, when we get to the next meeting, it'll be the same as you see it on. So, it'll be up to you to make sure you have those amendments in hand, or make sure that you give her on the language or what she need as far as the hours, and give Mr. Derrickson on the language of how you want it amended, or ensure that you have that in tow before the next meeting. Everybody okay with that? To make sure we're on the same page. All right.
Thank you, Angela. What did you mean to put you on the hot seat, day one?
I'm always on the hot seat, yeah, from HR.
Thank you.
I had, I'm sorry, I had to say one more thing. Because there are staff here in, in attendance, the discussion is with council members through Angela, or through myself, that's fine as well. This is not the opportunity for staff or for city council, and I'm sorry if I hurt some of my feelings, to go out and start asking what individual feelings are going to be. It's a dangerous thing when that starts happening, and it has to be through the police chief or the fire chief through Angela, back to city council. It can't be where everybody's lobbying because I'm, what I'm afraid of is, is staff will start lobbying, and I've already seen it, to start lobbying for their own personal reasons. And we need to do what's in the best interest of the department, of course, and of the city, and then we've all said that along the way, we just have to find that right balance. And we will, and I think all the right questions have been answered, and I think there'll be plenty of good suggestions that'll come forward, but I just wanna, I just have to say that because I just don't want everybody then to start tomorrow morning, when you guys are getting a million calls, everybody trying to give you ideas. It's gotta be focused through one person, and I think that's best, so, if that's okay.
See, that's absolutely. Additional questions, comments, or discussion on the first read? It was particular item. Anything else? Do you have any questions on the direction?
No, sir.
Okay, Mr. Criskie, do you have any questions on the direction?